Good evening. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, November 4th, 2024. The time is 6:01 PM. We are meeting in the Multi Service Center, Room 520, 48 Marion Road, and we are broadcasting on Zoom and Wareham Media. I'm going to call the meeting to order with a roll call, starting to my left.
Mike Baptiste here.
Jane Gleason here.
Sam Corbett here.
Julie Moran here.
And Carl Schultz, Chair, here. Okay. The first order of business is approval of the minutes from October 21st, 2024.
Still moved.
Comments? Any, is there any comments or discussion? All right. I have a motion, no discussion, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Sam Corbett, second by Mike Baptiste. All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. The minutes have been accepted, 5:00. I do want to, I want to wait for Josh before we start this. Is there anyone here representing Anna Charles Hunter?
Yes.
Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is David Kleener.
Speak and speak to the mic and spell your name.
Good evening. My name is David Kleener. It's K-L-E-N-E-R-T, and I have a business on the 225 South Main Street in West Bridgewater, Collins Engineering.
Okay. Please, please have a seat.
I'm going to set up.
Well, remain standing first. I'm going to swear you in. So raise your right hand and swear that, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth? All truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Hey, go ahead and get set up. We're waiting for Josh, so. Yes, we do. We have, we have the MyLAR here. So Josh, we've opened the A and R. Got it? I have a few opening remarks before you begin. Questions from the planning office. Again, there's confusion around designation of project numbers and where project information is posted. I remind you that the planning board was directed in April of this year to begin using Viewpoint, and we're still getting a mix of project numbers, project documentation. So we have project number 1124, but the documentation isn't posted on the website. Under Plan 24-6, documentation was uploaded. Mr., did you, you uploaded those files?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a couple of comments on that, just preliminary. So Josh, we need to figure out what to do because it's going to be confusing to everyone. And I had planning board members calling me, where is this stuff?
Sure.
So we need to resolve that. So Mr. Hunter, a couple of notes, and this is a note for the planning office as well. The plan set that was loaded into Viewpoint is not signed. It is stamped, but it's not signed or dated, what was uploaded. The Form A that was uploaded was not stamped in by the clerk. I'll get back to you. It's okay. The tax verification form that's posted on the website is not signed or dated. However, I will note that I have a MyLAR here that is signed and dated, so we do have a plan set. I believe I have a copy of Form A that was stamped in by the clerk, which Sonia did send by email, which I found in my email. And I have a tax verification form that is signed, but not dated. So the records for this application are
Horrible.
Inconsistent. That being said, I believe that, one, this is an A and R, which is a fairly straightforward application, and, two, that we do have a set of documentation that should let us operate tonight with the board's discussion. Do you believe that we have enough for you? It's an A and R. It's pretty straightforward.
No, what we have is what we normally get.
Yes.
Which is incomplete, inconsistent, confusing, not timely?
And we, yes. So we need to work, continue to work with the planning office to get that stuff to us in time.
At some point, it has to stop.
Correct. Do we have any questions? Before, I'll let the applicant present, but I do confirm that we have signed dated application material. It's not posted on the website. So an action, should this be approved, would be a request for the applicant to work with the planning office to get the complete documentation uploaded to the, to the Viewpoint site.
Okay.
Signed, stamped versions, and things like that.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Any other question before I let the applicant present? Okay. Please.
All right. So once again, my name's Dave Kleener from Collins Civil Engineering Group. These properties here are both owned by brothers, Hunter, I believe, Charles and David. So Charles owns 1037, and David and his wife own 1038. 1037 is to the left, 1038 is to the right. They would like to straighten out the existing lot line. They were very specific in what they wanted. They wanted to set at the, at the bound at the street, and they wanted to split this 50-foot section between bounds with a straight line instead of a crooked line. So that we just were very, we did exactly how they asked for it. We meet all the zoning requirements of the offsets. We're not changing any frontage.
What, what road is the frontage being claimed on?
The frontage is being claimed on Galt Road. They're both, both addresses have frontage on Galt, Galt Road.
Question for the planning office, Josh, is Galt Road an accepted way?
I believe it is, but I will double check.
Okay. Can you double, I believe it is, too. I just want to underwrite. And how much frontage is both lots before and after?
They're 200 feet for 1037 and 200 feet for 1037, so it's not changing.
Okay, great. So they have, they have adequate frontage, they, if we confirm, on an adequate way?
Yep.
And those are two of the criteria.
And to confirm the adequate way, this had been foremaned before historically, so there had been a previous foremaned or a subdivision of the property line that we're actually
A subdivision or?
Not a re-division of the, of the line.
An A and R. Thank you.
Yep. So you can see, we show the old lot line in the detail, and we're actually increasing the side, side offset by a couple of inches. That was 10.5, now it's 10.7. The required is 10.0. And really, all we're doing is straightening out the line. We meet the upland area. We do not affect any septic systems on the site, and both lots are conforming to the zoning requirements.
Anything else you want to offer?
It's pretty straightforward.
They usually are, but, Mr. Baptiste, no.
The, your print for Galt Road does not come on a diagonal, on an angle, on 28. They teed it up. It's dead-ended now.
Our surveyor found takings on Galt Road, and the original plans for those takings, in his professional opinion, were incorrect. And so he's got what I think is a fix for what was an incorrect plan before.
Okay.
Mike, I don't underst, I mean.
On, on the second lot, see where, see where it goes down, it comes up to 28?
Yes.
Galt Road ends there. When the town decided roads on ankles coming into a main drag were bad, so they made a T-section further up. If you go further up to the left, that's where Galt Road goes up to 28, right across from Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay.
And it's just a bad representation, the way it's, yeah.
So there was an error in the taking?
There was an error in the, in the takings back in the past, and he discovered those errors, and they were compounded on plans all the way up to this date.
So does this plan reflect the error?
This plan reflects the correction of what the old plan should have been.
Okay. And for the record, could you read in the plan set for Patty, please? Just the date and the
Approval not required plan in Wareham, Massachusetts, prepared for Charles Hunter by Collins Civil Engineering Group, Inc.
Thank you. And which engineer signed it? It's signed, it's stamped by?
It's signed and stamped by Stephen Rumba.
Thank you.
And the copy, the, I believe you have a couple of paper copies that are signed and stamped?
Yeah, and we have to sign the, the MyLAR.
And normally, on a, you know, on the AutoCAD drawings, we don't like to put the signatures on. They're, they're at grabs, but we do, and then we make PDFs out of them, so they can't be changed or altered.
Okay. So question for the planning office. If there's an error on historical plan sets, and this plan set is not consistent with those records, is that a problem? This is going to get filed with the Registry of Deeds. Is that going to cause a problem?
I don't foresee it causing a problem, no.
You foresee a problem?
No, it's a professional, it's a professional opinion from a licensed surveyor.
Okay.
And so what he did is he looked at the prior plans, integrated them on the ground, and realized there were issues.
Can you make sure you have a, you have a mic in front of you?
Oh, I'm sorry. So he looked at the plans, integrated them, and realized that they, was it an issue with the plan, or was it an issue with the legal description?
No, it's a small issue. It's a non-tangent, really, curve, you know? Back in the day, people working with tangents really
Okay.
Had a tough time.
Yeah.
So he, he wanted to point, I think that was one of them, that there was just a non-tangent curve on it.
Okay, great.
Does that satisfy you, Mr. Baptiste?
Yeah. I just, I just want to make sure nobody got screwed up later.
Great. Ms. Gleason?
So can you just confirm that Galt Road comes out to Cranberry Highway up at the top of the page?
This, this frontage, from the deed, says it's all frontage is on Galt Road.
Yep.
So where Galt Road comes out here?
Further up.
Further up?
Yep.
Well, is this sort of like a leg off of where Galt Road goes out to?
Galt Road went, actually, Galt Road went by both Hunter homes in the olden days, and the town went
This is officially Galt Road. It's in the registry.
Is that where Galt Road goes out to?
That's where it does now.
Is that where you?
Right. That was, that was added or changed.
So it's sort of a spur off of?
Yeah, yeah.
But
But the frontage is not, not disrupted by that correction?
Yeah. In the registry and on the town records, they both have frontage on Galt Road.
Galt Road, yep.
That's correct.
Yeah, no, I was just clarifying because I've been up there. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Baptiste. Your, your knowledge of town history is always welcome.
Technically, their spur on Galt Road should not be Galt Road still, because Galt Road goes up the other way.
Unless there's, there are no houses. They may have left it like that because there's no houses
Well, in, in the middle, there's two houses.
You might say that from here to here is the easement for Galt Road.
Right.
So that little triangle, that big triangle there?
Part of the
Is part of the easement for Galt Road. It's
Well, part of it.
There's no easement that intercepts here.
There's, there are no houses on that.
Yeah. And there's no easement line for the road that intercepts there.
Because there's two houses and they're wedging you.
Yeah.
And Nazi's stuck in there. I don't know how that happened, but.
I remember that.
Remember that?
Yeah.
Because everybody thought that was the easement where that property was, and all of a sudden, the trees disappeared and two foundations showed up. Here we go again. There's something that should have been corrected a long time ago.
Yeah, okay.
We don't want to dig into that.
Doesn't affect the
It should not, yeah. It's not.
See, the names from the past keep on coming up, see?
Yeah, well, that's why we, that's why we rely on you, our board historian. Your, your questions are answered, Ms. Gleason?
Yes, thank you.
Mine, too.
Sam?
Are these two gentlemen alive?
Yes.
Okay. Dave Hunter was my plumber for like 40 years, until he retired.
He's been crippled up for quite a while.
Yeah.
His father was a plumber, Ray Shally.
I know. It was him before Dave. Small town.
Other side?
They, yeah.
I think, I think his mother's still alive. Mrs. Hunter's still alive, is she?
I don't know about the mother being alive or not.
She lived in the first house. She was gone for a while. I think she's back. She's got to be close to 100.
Sorry, I opened this up.
I guess we lost.
No, no, it's good. It's good to get all the town history, share it with everyone.
I swore to tell the truth, and I, I don't know.
Good. Any, any more deliberation? Okay. Looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Sam Corbett, a second by Julie Moran to accept 1124 Anna and Charles Hunter A and R for Galt Road, also designated as Plan 24-6. I have a motion, a second. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. This has been accepted, 5:00. We have an A and R.
I think it's right there on the desk.
You never know what it's going to be.
We have a shopy.
Behind us, in the box, there is a shopy.
For all the town, all town history you've got.
I always, I always ask where my sunglasses are, and they're on my head.
Josh, do we need to sign the Form A as well? There's a signature block on the Form A.
Yes, you would.
It's not here, as far as I can tell.
Except the signature block is the old one.
And it's the wrong Form A.
It's the old version.
It's the wrong Form A?
Yes, it's got George, George and
Oh, it has pre-filled out members?
Has Sherri, has
Okay, let me, uh.
Yeah. Let me take a look. See how it's got all the friends, the old friends.
Date date is 2024.
This is a funny thing. One of those funny quirky actors.
Josh, do you know, too, is there an original minutes here for my signature?
Is that a minute?
No. This was mine, but it doesn't have the signatures.
I can sit down and see.
This might all turn into
No, no rush. I'm going to be, I'm going to stop this, can't, I'll be, I'll be making it tomorrow morning.
Sam?
Okay, well, we'll, uh
Yeah, so just now. There's no, there's no folder there.
I rely on
Oh, I've been here a long time. Like I said, I
Because you're old.
Yeah, that's true. Older than most people, yeah.
Actually, Carl, I'm supposed to be donating to sign this?
Okay.
More for a record keeping
It's fine.
Did you sign?
Right there under Carl.
I did.
Oh, you did. Okay. For the record, Patty, we're giving, name again?
David Kleener.
Kleener. Copy of, not a copy, the original and signed MyLAR.
That's the old version, so Josh is going to get it.
Are there two copies? Do we need to sign two copies?
There's no copy here for you.
No.
Your hard, your hard paper.
Yeah. So Josh is going to get it.
Is that, is that another one? Because Sonia usually works for a paper company.
That's the MyLAR.
Is that for the same project, or is that, no, that's for?
No, that's for a different project. It's probably It's in the, in the tube.
Not, not in the tube when I pulled it out.
Nothing, okay.
All right, well, that's not your issue. We'll deal with that. Josh, if Sonia needs a paper copy, I don't have one to sign.
We can, we can get that taken care of.
Right.
I, I could print one, no problem.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business, 2023 Warren QOZB LLC, modification to site plan review, 59 Main Street. Three items we're going to discuss. Discussion and possible vote. Well, there was an inspection report from Phil Cordero, request to release funds, and we need to begin building a list of items for the modification to the site plan special permit.
Great.
So is Mr. Cordero is not here. So we didn't ask Mr. Cordero to come, Josh?
I assumed you would have been here. I, I didn't specifically ask him to come, but
All right. Thank you. Okay. Before we begin, well, introduce yourselves and your role. I know Danny's role, but I don't think I know you.
My name's Rob DeRozier. I'm a structural engineer, and I own ASAP Engineering.
Okay.
And we're the architect on the project, and we're here to just present a revised planting plan.
Thank you. And then just introduce yourself.
Danny Warren, President of OQZB Trust.
Thank you. Could you spell your name, please?
Sure. D E S R O S I E R S.
Thank you. Okay. So, okay, so the first thing, Mr. Warren, did you get a copy of Mr. Cordero's report?
Yes, we did.
Good. Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure that you had access. Did the board members all get a copy of the report and have a, I sent it by email, but all right. So does the planning office have a report or comment on Mr. Cordero's inspection report?
We find his report to be acceptable.
I did have some questions that I sent to the planning office. So we can get to those when it's my turn on the, okay. All right, so let's discuss, I'll, we'll discuss, and then if, are you going to present again to Mr. Cordero's report, or?
Nope, I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, so fine, that's not your role today. Okay, so Mr. Cordero's report, it's, what was the date on it?
October 24th.
So for the record, Patty, we have a, an inspection report from Alan and Majors dated October 24th. My view is, in summary, he found that the plantings were, in general, acceptable. There were some changes needed to the landscape plan, which I think you are going to speak to. That was Mr. DeRozier. So for my question on the report, so the issue that Mr. Cordero brought up is that the plantings included non-native species. My question to the planning office, and particularly Conservation Commission, those non-native species were planted in a wetlands buffer zone, and does that comport with the Order of Conditions from Conservation Commission?
It will likely require an amended Order of Conditions, but after reviewing the plants, I think they, they are suitable for being within the buffer to a wetland.
Okay. The, the next item in his report, and again, which I think perhaps Mr. DeRozier's going to speak to, is a summary, sort of a summary statement, "The plant, plan lacks detail and does not address aesthetic conditions." So that was a statement of the inspection report, and the last thing, again, of the comment on the landscape plan is the, what was built doesn't comport with the plan. So you're going to address those?
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeRozier's going to address. Okay, we'll get to that.
And I just, can I add one more thing?
Sure, we can, we're discussing.
And then the size of the planting material.
Oh, well, yeah, I covered that broadly under the estate, but, yeah, okay. So there were some, some questions or comments
Right.
About the planning material. I don't know that there's, there's any action the board needs to take on the report other than it informs us. Before we move on to other items, do you want to introduce revised landscape plan?
Yes, you should have received one two weeks ago, a copy. What we did is we physically went out there and looked at what was on the ground and identified the species and located them. But I have, I have physical copy here for you.
Did you print or?
I did not.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe that we were provided with the revised landscape
Okay, would you like a paper copy to look at, or?
I would.
Yes, yes, we could
That would be great.
We could share.
Great, thank you.
For the record, Patty, please show that Mr. DeRozier's provided
Thank you.
A document
I know, yeah.
Titled Revised Planting Plan.
I couldn't, I did that.
Warren, QOZB LLC, 59 Main Street, Wareham, Massachusetts. It's, uh, the date on it is 8/30. Is there a new date? It says 8/30 on the plan date. 8/30, 2023. Is there a new date for this plan?
Yes, 10/16.
I'm looking, I'm looking for it.
There are revisions?
Oh, right here.
There's revision, yeah.
Thank you. So the plan was revised 10/16, 2024. Thank you. So for the record, we've got that on the, please speak to the plan.
Okay. Oh, we went out there and we measured, walked the site, and identified everything that was there, including some existing vegetation that wasn't noted on the original plan. What we ran into was the plan produced by GAF. They subbed it out to another architectural landscape consultant from Plymouth, who I don't think visited the site, and there were a few problems with
Do you know that?
I'm just assuming that because there were no existing trees, there's major trees on the site that weren't noted, and some of the species he picked to locate on site, like along the front, there were 11 of these green vase zelcona trees, which are fast-growing, very tall, and very broad. And there's overhead wires along the whole front of the property. Also, the street encroaches significantly on Mr. Warren's property there, so what, sort of, the property line appears to give you 10 feet of planting space in a large portion of the front. There's actually only three feet there between the curb line and the parking area, with utilities underneath, too. Water main, sewer, gas, and electric overhead. So large specimen trees are not suitable for that. Along the left side of the property, there's five extant red maple trees, which weren't noted on the plan, but there was a, a note to put new maple trees of the same type, red maples along that. So rather than cut the old ones down, the established trees, and put up four-inch caliper, three-inch caliper, we, we left those. On the right side of the property, there's three existing large black locust trees and another on the other side on British Landing that weren't noted on the plan, and there was several trees scheduled for planting there, so we didn't do that. So the rest of it was basically a few changes of one type of hibiscus for another, or moving a location, hydrangeas, roses. There was some switching of species, you know, particular species, types, but as you can see, they're well dispersed throughout the site. There's some planted in places where there hadn't been any specified, but it does break up the view and improve the look of the thing. So this is what, 99% of this is what's here. There's just one corner of it that hasn't been completed, the front corner near British Landing, where the last of the utilities were completed, and that's just 100 square feet that remains to be completed.
Okay. So, the... The plan is incomplete. There's work that needs to be done for the landscaping.
There's nine small shrubs and some grass that needs to be planted in that one.
And they're actually setting right where they're going to be planted.
Okay. Just as we sit here, though, they're not...
They're not in the ground.
They're not in the ground.
Well, there's three not in the ground. More weren't in the ground.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
So, basically, this plan represents what's there right now. And it shows, including some existing hemlocks that were there that weren't noted, and an existing water gum, which was left where it is. That's between the restaurant and the retaining wall. So, we located all of those, and then we went out and physically counted plants and pulled tags and identified everything. So, this is what's there right now. And hopefully, this is accessible. I mean, acceptable. We think that the reasons for making the changes, particularly in the tree stock, were important and critical and had to be done. I don't know if you've been by it, but it really looks pretty good. And the species of trees that were selected for along the front are more appropriate to the limited space and the utilities that are there. I have the original GAF plan here, which shows where the large trees are located, if you'd like to review that.
It's up to the board. I've been out to the site, so...
So have I. Yes.
Questions? Discussion? Okay. Does the planning office have any comment?
I do have one comment, and it's referring back to Mr. Cordero's letter. It looks like you have an apple tree proposed in one of the islands. And he just makes a note that it might be hard to maintain the parking area, if that's true.
It's only living there for a short period. It's going to go with the other three that aren't on the site. There was four there. We removed the other three. There's one left to go.
Okay.
But it's not going to stay there because it can't get the water it needs either. So, it's got to go.
And that's... You're just going to remove it? Not replace with anything? Just remove it?
Yeah. I took the other three to my home in Carver and planted them there, so I'm going to take this one.
Oh, so you're relocating it, which is a great thing. That's a good thing to know.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not cutting it down.
I think the removal of that tree may just warrant putting something else there.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so... Which island? Which...
It's the island that's right across from the banquet building.
Oh, this one? This one here?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's pretty full. So... It's located... That apple tree is located in an island that's got a lot of planting in it. So, I would think if things just kind of got moved around, redistributed, it would probably be just fine. You kind of don't want them all crowded anyway, so... And there's a... There is a blue hydrangea. Kind of shows a tree. I don't know. F here.
Oh, Nantucket Blue Hydrangea. Okay.
It was hard to squeeze everything into that island.
Yeah.
I know the fire department would be happy if there wasn't a tree in that island.
Yeah.
Which one is the tree? It's not marked?
It's O.
It's O. Enterprise Apple.
It's the one...
That's not a D. That's an O.
Yeah, it's closest to the banquet building in that island.
How would we feel about a Japanese maple? A low growth. They're beautiful. They don't make a mess. That's kind of what we were leaning towards.
Yeah, that would be nice. Yeah.
Japanese maples are not native species, though. Is that a problem for CONCO?
Not native, not invasive, though. So, I think it would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, because...
I have several on my property. I would hope they would be...
I just bought 15.
It's what it was to be native or non-invasive. So, it's one or the other. And there's two that aren't, but...
No fire bush.
No fire. I got a fire bush. It was there when I bought the house. It was there when I bought the house. Okay. So, a couple of clarifying questions. I don't hear any real problems with the plan, so...
They're still showing the foundation for the Conex box. Is that gone, Danny?
That's pretty much gone. We're going to do something there, but I don't think it's going to be that. I just... I built it, and I can't stand the way I think it's going to look. So, we'll probably be coming back to see you guys in the spring with another idea.
Okay. Okay. Because the Conex box wasn't approved in the plan set we did for the modification, as I remember it. So, let me rephrase. As I remember it, it wasn't, so... So, a question for the planning office. Thank you. I think this is... We'll take a vote, but I think this is going to be fine. There have been several meetings with the applicant over the past several months. Several changes to what's being built versus the plan have been identified. And one of the questions I've been trying to get at, this will require a modification to the site plan special permit, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we should work with the applicant to identify the changes that need to be brought forward to... This is perfecting everything.
Delineate. Yeah.
To get a final... Not as-built, to get a final site plan special permit. And then anything you have in your mind. I know that as the project has evolved, your vision for the project... So, anything... You don't have to tell us what they are, but anything new, you should bundle that into that application so we get it all buttoned up.
Yeah. There's a good chance there'll be nothing else done there. But I put a lot of money under the ground on that other end, in case we ever did want to build something more substantial down there.
Okay.
So, the underground work is done. Like I say, we built the box. We're looking at the box. We're saying, this is just a nut. You're going to take a beautiful place and make it look ridiculous. So, we're not doing that. So, I would say now, we're basically done. If we do anything else, it'll be a year or so down the road. It'll be a very substantial change. So, we're just going to wait and see what happens.
All right. So, we need to close this out with a modification. And you can work with the planning office to get that all wrapped up, and then we'll...
Talking minor modification?
No, I'm not. Until we see the plan set, we don't know whether it's major or minor.
I don't understand that.
There's a distinction to major versus minor in how it gets processed. If it's designated as a minor, it's merely an off... It's handed by the planning... Excuse me. Yeah, the planning office. It's a major modification. We have to schedule public hearings and go through. Until we see the cumulative impact, I don't think we can a priori decide if it's major or minor.
So, I guess my question is, the impact would be the fact the Conex box isn't going to be there.
Well, there's been other changes that have to get rolled forward.
You mean on...
The landscape plan as an example. This is different than what was approved. So, that has to get rolled into the modification. And there's been... You moved the dumpster. Again, all things that have been... We just have to get the final plan set done.
Okay, so...
And until we see what that is, I can't answer Sam's question because I...
So, would the process be GAF would compare the last approved set that was before you with whatever changes have been made to that, and then show...
But also...
Great new as-built. Yes.
Well, in effect, you have to do that for the as-built anyway, but we need to get the modifications approved so that the as-built then would match the approved plan set.
Yeah.
It's process, mostly. I don't...
So, I'm just thinking about the timeline because Judy told me today that the drop dead date is like December 6.
For what?
Are the permits all get pulled again?
I'm sorry.
Judy said today, Mrs. Whiteside said, that we had to have this totally buttoned up and over with before December 7.
Okay, so...
Or they were going to shut the place down again.
Is that because you have a temporary CFO?
Yes.
Mr. Warren? Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So, I'm not sure. So, again, to the planning office, how does the requirement for a major-minor, I'm not saying, a requirement for a modification to the plans affect his permit? I don't know the answer to that. And Ms. Whiteside hasn't communicated anything like that to me, so I'm unaware of that.
Is it the occupancy permit or the building?
No, she said it would go completely out, no more business. So, that's why I'm asking that. If that's the fact, and it's going to take time, then we're not going to start booking Christmas parties and all kind of stuff like that because it's happening every day now.
This is a question that I don't know the answer to. I need advice from the planning office. I'm just trying to get all the records tied up, and we only have... What was the date? We only have one more meeting.
25th.
On the 25th. So, we don't have time to even notice public hearings, if it were to require public hearings.
Well, so regardless, we don't book nothing else there, then?
I don't know the answer to that. Please don't. Don't take my comment.
No matter what the comment is, it doesn't change the fact that this won't be over between now and December 25.
Why does it have to be the 6? Because we do have another...
Because the permit I have expires on the 6.
That's the occupancy permit.
Temporary.
We just hired 35...
Temporary CFO.
Last four days, we hired 35 people because we thought we were ready to go. We hired everybody that got fired at the Rose when she closed. We hired every one of them. And we hired some more people. And we're booking stuff every day. So, I mean, like, this is...
I think you might find that between the last set that GAF had before you, which didn't have that on it, and what's here, which would just be, I think, just the dumpster building and updating this plan. And I don't know whether you consider that major or minor, but I think...
Well, my question is, has the use permit changed? Are you planning to open a restaurant? I understand you're rethinking that.
It's always going to be a restaurant. It has never changed from the day one.
Because it says banquet even here on the...
Day one, when we made the deal with Allen Slaven, State of Massachusetts, and the federal government.
As long as the use hasn't changed, then that was my question. So, you're saying...
Nothing's changed. It was going to be three seasons, three different things to help the town, not hurt the town. It was going to be a convention center in the dead of the winter. It was going to go into weddings in the spring, then back to a restaurant. Never serve breakfasts except a Sunday brunch.
None of that was in... I'm not arguing with you. I just... I don't remember reading any of that in the application that came to us. But, fine, that's a...
But the frustration is the time thing. So, my... I'm just going to say it again. If this is going to take two weeks, I need to know that now because I'm going to lay a bunch of...
I don't know how long it's going to take until we get the modification. And then we have to have a meeting and at least vote.
And you can't get a meeting for how long?
Well, the next one is scheduled for the 25th. The issue is holidays and other things. I'm not saying we can't.
I think it's really GAF.
But I can't book two and 300 people, Christmas parties, with knowing I'm not going to have a place again.
Well, I think if you have a conversation with GAF...
Correct.
And he talks to the planner, you'll know.
Right. That's right. That's where I'm...
Exactly. Yeah. Yep.
That's all I'm saying. I need a planning office to tell me the impact, or not me, but us. And this isn't my decision. It's the vote of the board.
I think the biggest change is what you're looking at right here.
Sure.
And if this is okay with you, then it's going to be them just relocating the dumpster. And you can decide whether that's major or minor. So, I think you...
The dumpster's been... Has been relocated. You've got the variance for that. The dumpster has been relocated.
Yes.
Built. It's already been hit by a truck and built again.
What kind of truck?
Cement truck coming, dumped three yards of cement, driving out of the driveway with the barrel up, talking on the phone, drove right into it. And then panicked, hit the wrong level, and picked it right up off its foundation with a bucket.
Okay. All right.
So, if we're talking about the landscaping plan and the dumpster, do we have knowledge of anything different above that?
Is the Conex box?
The Conex box, we need...
So, the removal of the Conex box, I think you guys can determine is a minor modification to the plan.
Please don't tell me.
If we have this done, the box and the dumpster, if that's it, we can call that minor. I can call it minor.
Fine. We have to take a vote on it.
I know, but that's my opinion.
Fine. I accept that.
Move it and get it.
I know you are. And that...
And Ken told me it was minor before I ever did it, but he forgot to tell you guys. He told me it was minor.
He doesn't get to decide. He should have informed us. Then we wouldn't have a lot of these discussions that we don't get all the information.
And I understand that. I really do.
So, we're looking at three different things. You need to talk with Josh.
Please, let's not assume that it's three different things. I want to go back.
Let me finish. And then you just get with Josh and find out if there's anything else that he believes that needs to be addressed. At that point, we can decide if it's minor or major and move forward.
All right.
It's not a big deal.
But it is a big deal because I tell you what, I'm not trying to be difficult. We're booking stuff like crazy. We booked out $500,000 worth of weddings in four days. I mean, we've got to stop doing it because we're like, we're on shaky ground, and it's making everybody crazy.
All right. So, let me ask you a question.
Call Bill tomorrow or tonight.
What's that?
Call Bill at GAF.
Yeah. Can we schedule this for the next meeting? If we're assuming all that is done?
We can certainly put it on the agenda for November 25. And if the planning office comes back, we could schedule, as we have in the past, off-cycle meetings. All of those things are possible. Scheduling an off-cycle meeting needs 20, 48 hours. We have to post it. I can promise you that we can put it on the agenda for the 25th. It's going to be a terrible meeting to come to, but...
Let's get one of those other ones.
And a lot of those...
Yeah, I don't want to put a lot on there.
I just got to tell you guys, I'm tired. I'm frustrated. I mean, it...
Then it's doable.
I'm sure it is, Sam, but I just...
It's doable?
By the time it bounces out of this office and bounces back down in the basement, God only knows what happens. It's just insanity. And I've worked through a whole lot of projects that this man will tell you, and I've never dealt with anything like I ran into here. So...
We all know that.
So, anyway, and I'm not trying to be difficult.
Sam, I would appreciate if you don't denigrate the planning board. It's not appropriate for you to denigrate the board.
I'm not.
It's not the board. Excuse me. I didn't mean it to sound that way.
Well, I took his comment that way.
Okay. Well, I didn't mean it to be that way. It's just... It's some kind of...
I'm very, very passionate about the quality of the work we're trying to do. And I want to do good work for the town. Okay. So, we... Per Sam's recommendation, I will commit, unless the board objects, to make sure that it's on the agenda for the 25th, and we can at least see the status. And I can also, I think the board is supportive of, if the planning office comes back and says, here it is. It's really not a big deal. We recommend a minor. We can schedule an off-cycle meeting. That's the best I can do at the moment.
Thank you. That seems very reasonable.
Is there anything else? I have... There's one more agenda point here before we finish.
Go ahead. No, go ahead with the agenda point.
No, it's for you. Have you requested a release of your bond?
That money's the least of my worries right now.
Well, it's a lot of money to me, so...
It ain't a lot of money to me. To me is to know that I can say I'm going to do something and do it.
Okay. So, we don't need to take up the release of the bond tonight?
No.
Okay. I did make sure it was scheduled so that we could address it.
Well, then, release it or don't release it. Do whichever.
Oh, well, but you said you weren't quite complete. So, if it's not a big deal for you, we can just...
We can address it at the... Put it on the agenda at the next meeting.
Right. And just to be... So, just so we're again clear, I have been informed by the town, the planning board doesn't release the bond. The planning board recommends to the select board that they release the bond. So, it...
It could be in better hands because if the election goes wrong way tomorrow, that money could be worth a whole lot less than the stock market than it is today. So, just hang on to that little bit of money.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't overlook that.
And I appreciate that.
Okay. So, we will carry that item forward to at least the 25th, and... Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Good night. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we close, one more question. So, the 6, December 6, you can't request an extension? There's not a...
She said there wouldn't be any extensions. She told us that today. So, my wife just went...
Wait. The select board told you or the chair of the select board told you?
All I know is somebody called my office and said, have everything done before the 6 because they won't renew it again.
There was no vote taken on that.
All right. This is like other stuff that I don't know any... Thank you. So, it would seem that that should be a... No, I don't want to speak out of turn. I don't know why that was.
I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good night.
Hi, guys. You want to take these things out of order because we have citizens here. I'll give you the update on the solar bonds.
Sounds good to me.
All right. So, we're going to take items on the agenda out of order. We're going to deal with presentation and item five, presentation, review, and discussion on site plan review, preliminary presentation for retail and office complex 236-242 Sandwich Road, lots 1100A and 1101A Fred Mannix. Please come forward and introduce yourself. And Mr. Titleback, what's the MAP reference for this? Do you know the MAP reference? Do you know the map reference? You gave me the lots, but I don't know the map.
Yeah, it should be on, on the plan.
Yeah, I think it is.
I don't think I got a copy of the plan.
Is that copies?
We dropped off 11 copies at the- It's map 133.
Huh?
Map 133.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. I'm Peter Titlebaum. I'm the project attorney here for-
Patty, could you spell your name again?
Yes, T E I. T E L. B A. U M. And I've been dealing with imperfections in that regard all my life, so I won't feel insulted if you get it wrong. And with me today is Fred Mannix, who's the property owner. And we also have Patrick Tropeano, who is assisting Fred in figuring out what we're going to do here.
Actually, the contractor.
Thank you. Could you both spell your names, please?
Yeah. Mannix, M A N N I X.
Thank you.
Tropeano, T R O P E A N O.
Thank you. I think we'll open, Mr. Titlebaum, are you going to open?
Yeah. First, if I could, I'd like to pass out a couple of other pieces of information here.
Okay. So read them into the record, please, as you hand them out.
Yeah. This one. Well, that's the, no, that's that one.
All right. Before you start, Peter-
Yeah.
Patty, for the record, please note that the town land use coordinator, Mr. Farady, handed out a package with a cover letter dated October 28th, 2024, addressed to me as chair. And it's a, an introduction of the plan and a summary. And it also includes a plan set dated, revision date, I can't see my-
I think it's 12704?
Yes. 12704.
Yes. And these aren't, to me, taken as stamped plans. These are plans that were-
Before?
Yeah.
Twenty years ago, he was before.
I thought, I thought the decision said, you had 20 years, it only said two, so I-
All right. Okay. So Patty, we got, we have that documented, and then Mr. Titlebaum is going to hand out some additional.
Yeah. This is actually the planning board approval from 2004 of a site plan review. So I'm going to give you each a copy of that.
I got a question a little off-record. Did you ever get the parking lot back from years? From your neighbor?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that, that was a big issue back then.
Yeah.
So this was originally approved on the record? And this plan that we're looking at-
But here I am.
It was approved, well, describe it. So we have a document, which is approval of site plan review, signed by George Barrett as clerk of the planning board, dated 3/4/04.
Yep.
That's correct. And the plan that's on this is slightly different than what we've given to you today, because in the intervening 20 years, he's taken one of the buildings and shifted the axis of the building on the plan.
They were actually-
When you're, when you're ready, we'll-
Yeah, we'll explain that.
And I just have-
We have a handout that kind of-
Great. So just one more question before you start, so that I'm clear. Mr. Mannix, Mr. Titlebaum, you were before us, before us in the past discussing-
Affordable housing.
Yes, and affordable, senior housing, mixed-use, kind of, this is, this is on the same property, but replacing that project.
Yes. We've, there's been a lot of construction cost, I have to go into it.
No, no. I'm just saying, this, this is now going to-
This is the same property with a much, much reduced use, you know, from the original plan.
Okay. So that other plan is no longer-
No, you know, we keep thinking about it, but it's very hard to do. Affordable housing, as you know, is needed, but it's-
Great.
We did obtain, he did receive a permit from the ZBA-
Right.
For an intermediate care-type facility, level-two facility. And we did get a year extension in August of last year that basically ran until this January. So he still has that, you know, as permitted, but, you know, the thought that he's going to be able to do that is just kind of out the window.
And that was permitted by the ZBA. This is now a site plan review coming back to us under 1440, wait a minute. I've got to switch my notes. Got it out of order, so I don't have my notes in order. 1522.4.
Yeah. His issue, frankly, is the amendments that have happened in the intervening 20 years to site plan review, to add anything with more than 10 parking spaces. So that's, that's what triggers the site plan review.
Which is the, the reference, I mean, 1522.4.
Yeah.
So this is, you're not, you don't need a variance for this?
No.
No. Now, the other thing we have here that I'm going to pass out to you now, is sort of a narrative that Fred put together to describe sort of what we're, what we're coming to you with as a concept to discuss tonight. It would be much preferred to look at this, and we'll be listening.
Great. Also, this is a concept. You have not filed an application for a site-
There is no pending application. You wanted to come in here first, just like we did with the Hidden Trails project-
It's fine.
To get some feedback, some plots, and that way save time when we do vote to the application in the public area.
Okay. So, Mr. Mannix, you're going to speak?
Yeah. Well, you can, if you take a quick look at that, what this package gives you is, they're small, eight-and-a-half by elevens. Originally, we went through, back in '04, I'm trying to think, yeah, it was '04. We went through four iterations of this, this project. There was a couple of, you know, back and forth about design and stuff like that. Anti, I think, was the architect.
Very patient.
Anti was it. Well, you know, hanging in there. So we went to, we went to a whole thing, metal, the metal building is a tough thing to, to look at. So we did something, and at that time, which I'd like to replicate, is you'll see a couple of small eight-and-a-half by elevens of each building. We prettied up the fronts of the buildings. There's a couple of bump outs that would have shingles on them, kind of Cape Cod looking. That's, that's what it came down to. So that's why it took so long to get, get through the board the first time. There was no question on the zoning as far as dimension and block coverage.
It's an as-of-right use in your own-
It's all, it's all as-of-right. We took, we took a while to do it. And I want to explain that, because if, we would like to submit this thing in a, a little, this is kind of crude, to put it mildly, this drawing.
Oh, no. There's details. And we would also request that you do a design review with the planning office and all the things that are required.
And what we'd like to do is, we know J.C. Engineering is still the engineer, there's a couple of things on there that have been upgraded since, which maybe could be picked up. What I'd like to do is have them put in the plans and have peer review come up with the, there's a stormwater change on gas traps and stuff like that. But essentially, nothing's changed as far as the layout goes, as far as the parking. All that stuff is the same.
Which, we don't have necessarily all those plan sets in detail, so we'll need to see.
Well, we'll get, we'll get a full set of plans. And also, the landscaping plan is kind of sparse. And I think now, now you require a landscape architect to have a standard plan for that, which I do, I'll have, I'll have that done. And I guess basically what we'd like to do is try to get the process through as quickly as possible to make a-
Everybody wants to go through it.
Everybody wants that. Did I, did I have to say that? But, you know, we're here to find out what the flavor of the board would be to the use. I mean, it's a loud use.
Yeah, we do, so let me, let me, let me, and Mr. Titlebaum, I'll, if you hold your piece, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, to the planning office, my understanding is, this only requires a site plan review. Under state law, the state law is silent on site plan review. However, the courts have been supportive of local boards conducting site plan reviews, so that the board understands, you can't, we cannot deny a site plan review. We can only condition the site plan, the plan. And the other thing the courts have admonished planning boards is, you can't condition it out of existence. So that's our guidance. So in, in essence, we're working collaboratively to build a project that is in the best interest of the town.
Correct.
So that's, that's the approach that we're going to take and would take if you were to apply for this.
Yeah. Okay. We'd like to apply, and I don't know how deep you want to get into it, we brought a couple of samples, they're kind of, you know, of what we would, the look of the place.
So I'm going to rely on Jane, on aesthetics, frontage, and design, and all those kind of questions.
And I know, Peter, you're familiar with the rules and regulations that were passed last year, and I know you'll go through them and know what a complete application looks like.
Yeah, exactly.
Two weeks ago.
We know you're a little more rigorous now than you were in the past.
Yes, exactly. More pages of requirements, but yeah.
Just one, is this protected under zoning? I mean, the use hasn't changed, but this is, there's no zoning protection for it. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may make one comment as well. All the information you have supplied is very good. My only hesitation is that if you guys, at some point, were to approve this, I think something that would be very valuable to you before anything would be a determination from our building inspector.
If that is a requirement from Concom.
Because I asked for the building inspector to review this, just to get his initial thought. And he really needs an architectural plan to determine that the use that's being presented is actually in line with what the building layout is.
Yes, I, yeah, the original architectural plan, we'll, we'll give you a much better plan than that.
Yeah, so even, even though we're only doing site plan review, everybody has to agree that the use is what the use is.
Exactly.
Right.
Plus, Concom needs to weigh in, if one way or the other.
Yeah. We understand the application will make the rounds.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear, that this, this could be defined as a storage use and require variance, and maybe never come before you in, anyway, but we just don't have that bit of information from the building inspector at this time.
That's why you're getting the feedback. Always a question to have resolved.
And not, not necessarily wanting to dive immediately into the weeds, but I'm looking at the, the old site plan, and in the footprint, I know that the footprints have changed, but the one that's sort of consistent, the one that's on the right-hand side of the drawing, is fairly consistent with the new site plan. But it has contours on it, and I see that there's an elevation change of about eight feet from one end to the other.
Yep.
And that doesn't, the elevations don't reflect that. So, and I know that you're still developing that, but that's something that's going to have a huge impact on the, the traffic circulation and how trucks access those overhead doors in the back. And so those are things that would have to be considered to make sure that this site will work for what I'm understanding is the use that you want to apply here.
The property slopes like this.
It slopes a lot. I mean, that's a fair amount of eight feet. That's, you know, close to a story from one end to the other.
Yeah, but it's close to 500 feet, and so it's a gradual slope. It's the existing, you can see-
Yeah, well, gradual or not, you still got to, it's not this, which is what the drawing's showing, so.
Okay. No, 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 I agree. I, the contour lines, I believe on the, you can see them better in the large drawing.
Yeah, well, I can see them on, on this. They show up enough for me to see that there are eight feet between one corner and the diagonal opposite corner. And that's, that's a fair amount to take up when you're looking at an elevation that does, does that, which is-
Oh, no, no, I, I, I didn't mean to send, that's not what I'm going to give you.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm saying, I don't necessarily want to take you into the weeds, but that's something that's going to really have a big impact on whether this use will work on the site.
Well, when you look at that elevation, that is only for the, the right-hand building. It doesn't show the relationship between the two buildings. It's kind of confusing. That's only one building.
Right, I understand that.
So one building is higher than the other. There's, there's no question about that, but-
Right. Well, that, that needs to be addressed in, in the, the traffic that goes behind the buildings. But even in that one single building, that this end, you know, either it's going to be, you know, one is going to be buried, and the other up in the air, or whatever. It's, you know, it's-
Oh, I see what you mean. Yeah, no, no, yeah, there's the, so the, the pitch.
Either that or the building steps by each, each unit. So that's what you got to figure out.
Right. And the land is cut in half, and essentially, it's, what you're seeing there is about a four-foot difference. And there's a little slight retaining wall on one side.
Yeah, so if there's cut on one side and fill on the other, that's fine, but it's just something that has to be addressed.
What we're going to try to do is maintain the existing contours. We don't want to do a cut and fill. We'll have two, two separate lots. And what will happen is, you'll, you'll go up, up one and kind of down the other. It'll try to, I like to maintain it's the same thing.
The contours that I was looking at went from here to here, and that was eight feet. So the other building's here.
All right.
So, anyway. Again, I really didn't mean to take us into the weeds, but, but those are things that are going to have to be-
That's what we need to call them.
They're going to have to be-
My way here is to hear these things.
We want to be in the weeds, because what happens is, it comes up, we do a drawing, and we might have neglected to look at something, too. That's-
Yeah. I mean, if you're, if you're planning on having traffic travel all the way along the back of both buildings, you can't drive a truck off a retaining wall, so.
Well, you can, but it's not advised.
And it's just, it's not a pretty sight, so.
Probably not a good idea. Probably not a good idea. No, I, I couldn't agree more. But that, that's a crude drawing. I wanted to put it in just to show what we did the last time.
Understood, understood. It was, it was about giving us a sense that you want to have high bay doors and man doors on the backside, and you want to have something that looks a little more contextual on the front side.
Yeah.
And that conveys that, but the reality of it is that you've got contours to deal with, among other things. I mean, that's just one, that's my five-minute look at this.
No, we appreciate it. I don't know, are there any other questions that, as far as the use goes, we'll do layouts? It's going to be a, I guess it's a business use. It's kind of hard to figure out. It's business use in office.
Yeah.
So we anticipate small, small space.
It's going to be basically a contractor.
Contractors would use it, you know, a shop, like a carpenter or something like that, or a smaller, I think you'll find today, people like manufacturers representatives that would have a small inventory.
Yeah.
So that's, it's not really a storage use. It's kind of a loading zone, and I'll break that out. That's what the doors are. And the parking is outdoor parking. You could always park inside. There's room for a couple of cars. So there's plenty of room for parking for employees and for equipment. I mean, I don't know who would come in there. The target area would be somebody who is a small contractor. As far as trucks and big vehicles, it's not for that.
Yeah, and they're probably taking their business is they're going to a remote site. They're not doing the business here. This is for...
Not really.
Storage or inventory or...
They're not big enough for that, you know? And what happens is we found, there's a need for it, and it kind of eliminates people from putting junk in their yards around. That was the reason, I think, we came to before the board 20 years ago, because they were going to crack down on it in Wareham. I used to live in Wareham back then, and then we, one thing led to another, and here I am.
Mikey and I are still waiting for that crackdown, but that's okay.
It is a big problem. It's far everywhere.
Big problem here in Wareham, as you know, of having commercial uses in the retail, in the residential areas.
Yeah.
And this could help alleviate some of that. There's not a whole lot of it. We probably should have more, but for this particular use, I think it works, you know?
One of the things too is, as we look forward regionally, once we start seeing replacement of the born bridge construction go up, you're going to see a ton of business, a ton of, you know, land being taken up with storage of things for the bridge, if there's fabrication that goes on locally that, and so on and so forth. So there's going to be a need for this kind of thing for support businesses, and even if those support businesses don't end up here, they're going to wind up driving existing businesses here. Because, you know, somebody's going to come in with mega bucks and be able to price these guys out when it comes to renting or leasing these sorts of places to do things. So we think there's going to be a pretty big regional need for this, because that bridge is what, a $2 billion project or something crazy like that?
Four billion for the two bridges.
Yep.
Two billion for that one, though, because that's the only one they have funding for now is the first one, right?
It'll still be four businesses. It's not even...
That's good. They need to not do them simultaneously.
Yeah, talk to me about the Four River Bridge in Quincy. The temporary bridge was 20 years.
The interesting thing about the bridge is that they built both of them in two years, and now they're going to build one of them in nine years.
Yeah.
It seems like technology's gotten better, hasn't it? It just doesn't seem right.
Well, the only difference is you won't have 10 guys getting killed from up the bridge like they did when they did them in two years. That might be the one benefit, but...
Those bridges lasted pretty good.
Yeah, not bad. So I think there is a good, there's a model for this use.
Yes, for sure.
It's not in, not, the one I'm thinking of that's really easy to look at is in Marion, right before Point Road, next to Gibbs Plumbing. There's one that's a multi-bay, small business, small contractor, high bay doors, but it was pretty nicely done.
There's one in Cabbage Inn, 258.
Oh, yes, there is, right where the ice cream...
It's elevated, so they got storage down below, and there's, I think there's like four or six in there.
Yeah.
There is big demand for them now.
It's a nice use, it's a quiet use. It's not a big distribution center.
Both of those examples are nicely done, like the...
You know, if we had our druthers, we would have put in the care center. But unfortunately, the care center, there's a new theory about care now for seniors, and that's aging in place. That's what they call it now.
Yep.
Because it costs so much money to go into these facilities. Nobody wants to run them anymore, and it's cheaper to send somebody in, even full-time into a house, to take care of somebody than it costs to go into one of those facilities.
It's gotten crazy.
So you just can't, you can't do them anymore. You just can't. So it makes it a sort of not a good situation, so.
Medicaid doesn't want to pay for keeping you in these places either. And, you know, frankly, they've been understaffed for decades anyway. My grandmother broke out of Forest View three separate times, and I had to go catch her. So, I mean, even then they weren't staffed, and that was in the early 90s, so.
Seems like her son.
Anyway, what I'd like to do is show you, I can't.
Exactly.
I thought you said storage, I didn't...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is actually under construction. It's done now, but in the middle, it's still under construction.
Oops. Jesus.
So there's town...
I'll break the place, they won't like you then.
I've seen going up and thought, hmm.
So, I feel like I'm on Shark Tank here with a better product. So, this is a typical metal building that everybody sees with the ribs and everything. It looks kind of like a mortar barn. What they've come out with, the space, the same company that I was using back then, they've come out with a new panel that kind of flattens out.
It's like beadboard, you know?
Yeah, it's like a beadboard on the sides, and then the front, we would put some extensions on it, which is the reason I gave you that kind of crude drawing, just to show you there'd be like a couple of bump outs, like you would see in a house.
With shingle, some kind of shingle trim.
Yeah, that would kind of look like a cave carved shingle.
The design review folks will be, that would please them.
And we'll make, we'll have a...
Here's Point Road, so it's...
Well, you saw what I, you guys didn't see it. We did it for the intermediate care center. We'll give you a colored drawing, a rendering of what it's going to look like, much better than that. But that's the idea, it's the only thing I had on paper right now, is to show you that we put some bump outs out to give the, you don't want just a big square box of a building. And then Auntie is the one that came up with turning it, you know, perpendicular.
Which is this? Is this what Auntie put together?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is, this is the...
We're partners in a project.
Yeah, got it. Sure.
We're partners in a project.
Oh, for God's sake.
Auntie?
Auntie.
Really? How's she doing? I haven't seen her in a long time.
She's good.
Doing great? Oh, that's good. She was a hot ticket.
Yeah, she is, and she was nice, and she, that was a good, that was a good move, because it made the thing smaller.
Yeah.
And she got a little mad at me because I, it looked kind of narrow, so I put that little bump out on the side. She says, now you get yourself another unit. I said, thank you. But it did, it looked kind of funny if you put it on in, so we stuck that little bump out. But it won, so, yeah, tell her I said hello. This is very nice.
Mr. Baptiste was here the first time this went through.
He was here for the first go-round.
Was Auntie on the board then?
She was.
Yeah, he was on the board, wasn't he?
Yeah, Auntie was our first employee at my old office.
Oh, really? Oh, great. So she came up with that, that's, you know, that's why it took a while, went back and forth. And I'm willing to do things. I just don't want to, I appreciate what you're saying, and we'll get it in there.
Yeah, I just, I think that it's going to change the face of this, and is going to have a big impact on the site circulation and how you get trucks in there, because presumably you're going to want to be able to get a, at least a pickup truck to be able to back up to the overhead door.
Right.
Originally, they did the fire truck thing.
We did the fire truck thing for the other ones, you know?
We were able to get them through, no problem.
Yeah.
I mean, there's even maybe an opportunity there that maybe some of the, some of the high bay doors could have a loading dock situation where you could back up and have the bed at grade with the...
Yeah, feel like a box truck or...
For some of them, and then have the other ones as the grade drops, or what, you know...
What's happened with hydraulics now that they have portable, I know what you're saying, lifts. They have like a portable lift that's really reasonable. You know, Langley puts them out, and a person can use that as a loading lift.
Right, but what I'm saying is that if you've got, if you've got contours on the site, if you've got topography that you can make work for you and be able to offer not necessarily the same kind of every base as this, it could be that the ones that are at a certain location relative to the contours gets a, gets a loading dock and the other ones don't.
If you're downhill, you get the dock, and if you're uphill, then it's just drive-in.
Then it's just drive-in.
We'll take a close look at that. We were able to take advantage of that to underground parking on the other project. We took advantage of that.
Yeah.
So, you know, I know what you mean. But I don't know if there's any other questions that I can answer.
I just had one question. Can I assume, even though the treatment plant is across the street or something, that this is septic private sewer? Do we know?
It's going to be private, yes.
Yeah, no tie-in.
Yeah, there's no tie-in.
It's amazing. They can smell the sewer. They can see the sewer.
You can whack a golf ball to the sewer.
It's actually quite a ways from there, and it would require a pumping station to get it there. Because the other project has such a...
Yeah, it did.
Has to go all the way out and go over to Sunset, up by Sunset and Lad up there.
There's a manhole there.
So it's a considerable cost due.
Yeah.
And it, and there's very little, you know, they only have one bathroom kind of thing, so it's really not a, it's not an issue where you're going to have people flushing.
So no restaurants?
There's no sinks or kitchens or anything, so septic is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we were before ZVA, it was understood that we would have to tie in a sewer, just because of the intensity of having, I think they approved 80-something units in the level two care facility.
Sure.
And, you know, when you look at the clientele, they probably should have required more, because you're dealing with old people who really, you know, use a lot more laundry services. As we get older, it's like being a baby again, so you're basically, you know, a lot of washing, a lot of cleaning going on.
I was looking forward to the back decks. Remember, they're going to have the smoking decks in the back?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So as you develop this, I would say that I think that there is some merit to this old plan where one is turned relative to the other, and then you don't get this incredibly long, even if it's two buildings.
Totally agree.
You don't get this incredibly long facade, and you also, I would say to your benefit, it would give you more of a presence on Plymouth Road as well as Agawam instead of only on Agawam or Route 6.
Yeah, but we're trying to minimize, you know, Plymouth Road, we had the front, because there's some, it's a nice little dead-end street. We're kind of conscious of that neighborhood, too.
Well, and the other thing that this does, if you do the L, is that it sort of hides the high bay doors from the street view.
Right, and also it hides some of the, you know, the front parking. It's a nice setup. She made a very good suggestion, and we took it.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Any other feedback? We look forward to seeing you again.
Great, together.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Thanks for the time, was appreciated.
Thank you.
Giving us some good thoughts, ideas, and direction.
Good to see everybody too, by the way.
Thank you.
Nice to see you, Pat. Peter. We are still...
Neighbor, it's been a month and a half since you've seen my mother.
I asked him for a sample. I said, you're going to be kidding me, I'm going to be slicing everybody's hands up.
Be careful, be careful.
I know, now. I thought they had a book.
Oh, you mean like...
See, don't worry, just pick them up on your way, I'll give them to you.
Yeah, reasonable, yes.
Have a good one. All right. The next item on the agenda, and I think we, depending on your questions, we could probably get through this, is a status update on the solar decommissioning bonds renewal. The agenda item that I'm going to focus on is for four projects, all owned by Clearview. I want to note for the record, there are two other projects that we don't have any status or, we haven't gotten a response from the applicant, is that correct? So Josh sent demand letters to Squirrel Island Road, that's Mr. Perry, and to, there's another project at 160 Tahonet that I think is still owned by Borrego, is that correct, or Newleaf?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so we have not heard from those two. Clearview has responded, and we've been meeting with them, Mike was meeting with them, I met with them, Ken, since last November. As I reported at the last meeting, their bonds automatically renewed. We don't know the amount yet, but they, because they can't default on those bonds, so they have them set up to automatically renew.
Just a point of clarification, it's Clearway.
Clear, oh, I thought it was Clearview. Okay, thank you. Patty, show it as Clearway, not Clearview. All right, so Attorney Bowen, Mr. Buckland, Josh, and I met with representatives of Clearway. We confirmed that we're discussing four projects that they have assumed ownership of. 71 Charlotte Furnace Road designated as our 2018, 160 Tahonet Road designated as our 2118, 77 Farm-to-Market Road designated as 1918, and 299 Farm-to-Market Road designated as 299. We and the applicants, the applicant, discussed the planning board's move to using the NREL report as standard. We discussed, we discussed the merits and the reasoning behind it, primarily giving the planning board a consistent way to compare against projects. They understood our goal and supported our goal, however, they did not support the idea of a standard just based on kilowatt-hours as it did not take into account topology, land, location. And they are, they counter-proposed, not that they weren't willing to establish a new value, but they would prefer to use a, an estimate, a detailed estimate provided by an engineer that would be acceptable.
So in other words, what's going to happen is they're going to go to the state, and the state's going to tell us what they're going to pay.
No, 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 they're going to, let me tell you what we've agreed to. We'll see what happens in the end, but right now what we agreed to is they proposed to come back with a revised decommissioning estimate with detail. And let me, that's going to be important, because I'm going to come to that. They have proposed using a firm called TRC, who was known to both, to the planning office and to the land use coordinator as a large reputable firm. We discussed their doing that. We also then debated internally, saying we will need to have it peer reviewed, someone who we can rely on. There was a little bit of back and forth of questioning my lack of trust in them, and I said, I didn't say trust but verify, but I did acknowledge I don't trust the applicants. And only because of the inconsistency across the projects we've seen. I was told explicitly, I can't rely on that as an argument, that we have to only look at this application in its instance. Anyway, it was very positive, we moved forward. I did ask the applicant pointedly, if he were to propose a decommissioning plan today, it would be at a, would it be at the same number that you see here, or would it be higher? And their engineer sort of said it would be higher, but he didn't quantify that value. Again, no one had the decommissioning plan in front of them, no one had how the, the old estimate was created in front of them. Okay, so, moving forward, and please also know that I made it clear that even though I was offering an approach, I, and not the planning board, I can't agree on this, I would bring it back and present it to you. So fortunately, being the anal retentive kind of guy I am, I came prepared with a detailed line item estimate for how to do a decommissioning plan, and it was a 15-page document with, I think I sent it to all of you guys.
Yes, it was.
And I said, okay, this is the standard that we would then expect you to follow. And I don't think they were prepared for me to be ready.
Right. They weren't prepared for his, but I think, so they have already contracted TRC to do a decommissioning plan. So I think they had an idea of what was, what they were going to present. I don't think they were expecting Carl to have a plan of what he was expecting them to present.
Right, so, and I do have to thank a prominent citizen for helping me put that together. And it was, it was great. He was very helpful, so that I was prepared for that meeting. So with your agreement, and their, they would, they've agreed to come back with a detailed revised estimate, we would then evaluate it with our peer review, and we would be looking for something with the level of detail that I presented. And just so you know, that the calculations using the level of detail that I presented comes out, it's not an exact match to NREL, but that's how the NREL, they did that approach to develop their estimate. Now, interestingly enough, one of the young ladies on their team worked for the government, I don't remember what she said her job was, but she worked with the guys who wrote the standard. And they, she actually called them up, and she reported without, that the guys at NREL weren't really trying to write a standard for decommissioning, rather they were trying to convince folks, you want to, you want to keep the sites active. That was their goal. And they didn't actually, she reported, they didn't actually write it to be used as a standard to apply the methodology. However, I did come up with, I found four towns that were actually doing that, I found other studies that have recommended that, I found a state study that recommended that. So we have some, we have foundation for our thought. However, if we get a detailed decommissioning plan that is as thorough as the draft that I provided, I think we could be reliably confident. So to give you another idea, the decommissioning line item plan that I provided was drafted by a professional construction estimator.
Cost estimator, yeah.
A cost estimator, and it was built as a construction plan.
Yeah.
It should be.
Yeah, and the argument being, this is a construction plan.
Yeah, that's absolutely how it should be done.
And so we actually could conceive, did you call our consultant to see if, it's conceivable that this cost estimator, who actually built this for another town locally, could conceivably be our consultant.
Yeah, that's right.
So we're trying to establish 53G account values. There's some confusion about the 53G accounts, but the issue being with that is they're established in the name of Borrego, and it's not clear that Clearway has rights to access those accounts. All things that need to be worked out beyond us, but, so that's, my recommendation to you is for these four projects, that we give this a shot, and being that, then that would give us perhaps two ways to move forward. We could offer an applicant, okay, you want to just do the standard multiplier? That could be, this is all debate, things we need to discuss, or you have to provide us a decommissioning estimate that looks like this. So that's, my recommendation to do is we try it for these four. So that's... My recommendation to do is we try it for these four. I didn't commit to that we would actually accept it, I said we would evaluate the results that you come back with.
And Carl, it's helpful that you're saying it comes from at least one town who has been using it, have they been using it?
They used it, yes, for a large, at least one large solar project, a local town.
So this was developed for a specific project, yes?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
So does this open the door?
Large solar farm, yeah.
Does this open the door for projects that have already used our formula in the past?
The town council told me that that was not a concern, that each project is individual and...
We've set a standard.
And we have, and he said we couldn't apply this standard to this project. And I didn't argue with him because I didn't have the conditions of approval in front of me. And the other thing, and I'm pretty sure these were established using bylaws that didn't have any solar in the bylaws. So we're... Our grounding was soft. So this seemed like an approach that could work, particularly if we can get this level of estimation, we can get an estimator that says, yeah, they did this right. I did propose to Josh that we reach out to Phil and sit down with him and discuss this and find out his comfort level with being that evaluator. So we're going to schedule lunch rate with Phil.
Yeah, something, yep.
Yeah. So my recommend... Now for delivery, so Mike, no, the plan is not for them to go to get the state to overrule us. And even if the state, as I understand the legislation right now, the state would only tell us, you can't deny it perhaps? I'm speaking very broadly, they can't tell us that we can't have a decommissioning plan. They wouldn't tell us, and they're not going to speak to how we establish that decommissioning plan. And the other thing that I want to continue to point out is, even if we get pushed on special permit, we still require a site plan review. And as you heard today, even though we can't deny a site plan, we can condition a site plan as necessary to fit the site in our town. So we can't condition it out of existence, but... And the state can't... The state doesn't have laws that rule on that, so we would only rely on court rulings on site plan.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, we can deny a special permit.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that's different. The state law is very clear on special permit, that is codified in...
That's right.
So if both are required and...
Okay. Now, when we come to the next section, we'll talk about both being required.
Well, and I know too that there are so many states that part of their legislation on solar is to incorporate decommissioning requirements, so...
And the model bylaw says that you should have it, and all of the state guidance says that you should have a decommissioning plan.
Right. Many states have actually created somewhat... That's why I asked where yours came from. Some states have actually adopted pretty strenuous, pretty detailed decommissioning standards and calculations, so...
So...
We're not outliers here in other words.
I'm going to stop talking, but I'd like to hear your opinion on using this approach for these four projects, based on the fact that the client is willing that our legal basis is softer than it has been as we've evolved our bylaws and rules and regs. And I didn't commit to what happens if the result, if they come back and still say $190,000 and...
We're not committing.
We did not commit. If you look at the way I wrote the task plan, compare and contrast and evaluate, and then I could bring back a decision, a recommendation, or Josh could bring back whomever, we'd bring it back and say, okay, based on this process, for this project, using the detailed line item estimate, they've established a new value of X dollars compared to the NREL standard, it's plus or minus three percent, 50 percent, a thousand, whatever. And we could then make a vote to say, okay, we agree to establish it at this new level.
But we are treating this as four separate units, we're not...
No, there would not be one bond, there has to be a bond.
Four different, okay.
There would be four different calculations, is my... And that's the way, if you look at the task plan I wrote, one for each project.
And can we accept one and not the other on those four units?
Conceivably, they're independent and not... So depending on... Yes, the answer is yes, they're not...
They're tied together on...
Other than that they're tied together, the same applicant.
That's it.
Three separate sites, four separate sites.
Four separate sites.
Okay, all right, yes.
So presumably, if your acceptance or denial was inconsistent, it would be based on details. If you accept one, then presumably you're accepting in concept.
Right, we would have to find out why.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why I'm saying conceivably, yes, until we...
The photography is different, the waterway is different, there are differences between the sites. One's high and dry and one's...
But the concept of the decommissioning, that estimate would be either you agree or don't agree.
Right, my expectation would be, there's a line item for every single thing, and it says does not apply or...
In some cases, it may not, right.
Right. And then we would be able to discuss, why doesn't this one apply? We have more information... If you look at the decommissioning estimates we got today, we didn't get that level of... Well, certainly, all of those line items weren't considered. Nobody estimated the cost of porta-potties in their line item detail, but that's in the plan.
It should be.
I mean, just as an example of detail and thoroughness.
Yeah, if we want to take care of the aquifer.
Yes, so...
I think it's perfectly reasonable.
Yeah, I do too.
Mike, I know you're our concern... I didn't mean that negative, I want to hear your...
No, I agree with you, I don't think one size fit all type analogy works in this situation.
It's easier for us because then we're... The founding principle is, the five of us are not qualified to say, is this complete or incomplete?
Right, right, I agree with you.
And we have limited res... And I don't think Josh would say he is, or Ken would say he is qualified to do that evaluation. We don't know yet if Mr. Cudaro thinks he is.
And I also think by breaking it down in the detail you have, it makes it easier for peer review as well.
Right.
So I think it makes a lot of sense, and it's, you know, there's a lot of clarity to it.
Now, they haven't responded to my draft, but depending on what we do tonight, if we were to vote saying we support moving forward this approach, I'm going to update my status then. Per my agreement, I reviewed this of the board, and the planning board voted X, Y, Z in favor, against, and...
But also, we could use this as a template going forward, so nobody uses the porta-potty. And it's in this detail, we could use this as a template going forward.
Absolutely.
And amend the rules or regulations to incorporate it.
Right, but that's...
Down the road.
That's not a complicated process anymore, we have a public hearing.
Correct.
And I think there would be support from the planning office to do that, I think town council would be supportive of that. Let's trial this one and see.
Thank you for all your hard work, Carl.
Well, it's...
It's a lot of work.
You're welcome, it's what we need to do. It's all part of our journey, solar is a big deal and for the town.
Yeah, technology's moving too fast, we can't keep up. We're reacting to the situation versus...
Right, and if we... And if the state limits our ability to approve or deny, what we can focus on is conditioning, proper conditioning and commissioning per site, and this is consistent with that approach.
Well, it seems that the one sort of check that we've got for the health, safety, and welfare that's okay is the decommissioning plan.
That is clearly...
And I'm sorry that it's after the cart has left the barnyard, but I wish that we were able to do that at the beginning of the project rather than at the obsolescence of it, but...
Like Mike said, it's changing every day. Out of the Wall Street Journal to that point, Google and Amazon, I think, are going with nuclear for their needs. They'll have the first model this spring, up and running on Three Mile Island within a year and a half.
Oh, good place to put it.
It's a good place, they think everything's there.
Small-scale nuclear is a growing viable option.
And they've chosen it over everything else, and they're small, they don't have to be by water, they're more efficient than anything else out there, and they've chosen this as their future. And without reading the whole thing, I'll give you this in the next package. It's just, that's how fast it's turning around. Two major corporations have said, solar, wind, but they can't do it, it's too expensive, we're going to go nuclear, starting tomorrow, and that's the future, they're presenting themselves.
Mr. Gates has a large nuclear project in Montana, I think, that's sodium cooled.
Making solar obsolete, and you'll have potentially abandonment of...
Right, but going back to your point.
We really need to protect the town.
We don't have to wait till the end, though, we could have a finding of fact upfront that says the decom... We find that the decommissioning plan is inadequate, and that could be for health, safety, and welfare, and that could be a... We could have a way of justifying that, not saying we should deny it, or we could say we find it is adequate, either way, but we now have a method for...
At the beginning.
At the beginning.
That if the decommissioning is not acceptable, that...
Right, or we should have a finding that says it is adequate.
Yeah, and make it part of the application process.
Yeah, well, it is, absolutely requires it's part of the application.
Right up front, the whole thing, completing it in its entirety.
Yeah, and then that, I don't want to deliberate on projects, but one could argue with some of our applications, if you can't tell us what equipment you're installing, how can you give us a decommissioning plan?
They don't know themselves, Carl.
But then they can't give us a... They can't give us a decommissioning plan that...
And that also addresses some of our concerns about the arrays.
Also, you look at Tyans, they're years away from building, the equipment could be entirely different in two years, in three years.
And perhaps we need to then write conditions that say, as this evolves, you've got to continue to update and get approval of your new decommissioning plan. Our bylaws aren't tight enough around that, and that doesn't even have to be in the special permit, that could be in the site plan. Or both. These are things we're learning, but that's why it's important that we keep moving forward, as you said, we got to keep up. We're five steps behind, but we got to stay five steps behind.
And share it, and share it, you know, with Serpide, some of the towns in our Serpide group and others, because I think everyone is looking for help on all this.
So I would be looking for a vote of support to continue with Clearway on evaluating this approach for establishing new bonds.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Second, yeah.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Coburn, aye.
And the chair votes aye. So my action item is, I will notify the applicant that the board supports evaluating this approach, and we'll see where it takes us.
They know this is just an evaluation, we're not...
I can't speak... My new stoic, I can't speak to what they know, I can only speak to what I've said. We should sit down with Phil. Please reach out to the gentleman who helped me prepare this, to see if we can talk to his estimator, or her estimator, the estimator, as a potential resource. And...
That would be good.
But the individual who helped me, really, in your hearts, you should know, they did a good thing for us. All right, so that item is closed. Where... Okay, so I was going to get an update from the planning office on filing the rules and regulations, but it appears that our planning board team may be still working on testing. Where are we at with...
I assure you tomorrow, Jane has given... We've all given our corrections to typographical errors, so I have a meeting tomorrow morning, and we will make sure that that's all finalized, and we can file them and be done, so I'm optimistic.
You and I have a meeting, or?
I have a meeting with Ken on something else, so... Yes, sorry. Nope, you're good. I have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00, so I will make sure that's number one agenda, we'll get that squared away.
And so, following up on earlier, could you do a positive report back to the planning board about... Yes, it's going to get posted?
Correct.
No, there's five more action items, whatever it is. Okay, thank you. Okay. Pending applications, Josh. Now, at the last meeting, we were reported there were no pending applications, there was at least one.
Yeah.
What's in the queue?
So right now, we have WaterWiz has put in an application for their parking.
What is it? It's a site plan special permit? Special, what is it, WaterWiz?
I believe you're correct, site plan special permit. Let me see if I can pull it up.
There have a... Is it tied into all of the things with WaterWiz before Conservation Commission? And those, all of those are related to this? And they don't need a variance for what they're trying to do right now, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay, all right. Let's get clear on where these plans are. So I haven't up... When is the plan going to be? Is it... Are we going to start our six-week calendar now?
Unless it's already... Yes, if the process is going to be represented to the planning board, and that's when the calendar starts, we can do that.
Well, we're going to still... I just have to come up with a new calendar going into next year.
Oh, for... I understand.
So six weeks from today is in 2025, I'll sit and calculate in a minute. I just haven't republished the calendar. So it's... We have a complete application at this point?
I haven't reviewed it, but I believe so.
And it's going to be where?
It will be on viewpoint.
And it will be called what?
It will be given a viewpoint project identifier, which is plan-24-something.
Great, perfect.
The planning office still uses their old system because of historic tracking of projects.
Then they don't need to expose that to us or the citizens, do they?
Probably not anymore, no. I'd say it's more in line with billing and things like that.
Right, we could keep it, make it in a note or in...
So there is a spot in the planning application that I put that detail in.
Great.
So in the planning application, it is tied to the way the planning office is processing these.
Great, and it will not be posted to the website, all the planned documents will be in viewpoint?
Correct.
Okay, and we've clarified that citizens' letters, comments, updates are all going to get posted by the planning office to viewpoint?
Correct, there is no option for a citizen to...
Post.
Post in viewpoint.
So they continue to send it to the planning office like they have always done?
Correct.
And the planning office will ensure that it's posted?
To the viewpoint application, which is no different than what we were doing for the town website.
Different places, yes. Six weeks, Carl, is December 16th of this year.
Yeah, the last meeting is the ninth, so what is the first?
The ninth, one, two, three, four, five.
So count, so...
Six is January 20th, which is not a planning board night.
Well, what is the planning board night?
That's more than six weeks?
Well, or at least...
Just next? Well, we would meet on the 13th and the 27th, the 13th would not be six weeks.
So the 27th. So we'll target it for January 27th. See, that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to get that rolling, rolling calendar.
Somewhere I have a piece of paper that I calculated, I figured out what's six weeks for all the planning board... Somewhere I have a piece of paper that I calcu, I figured out what's six weeks for all the planning board meeting dates.
Oh, which is what I.
Six weeks prior.
Yeah, see, that's what I just need to do, is update the one I did.
Well, I think if we just print that out and.
Well, I, I want it posted.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, here, I mean.
As the rules and regs require, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I have.
A year ahead is probably not.
Oh, I was doing them, so I, I, I did, this never got posted, by the way, Josh, even though I requested it. This is our policy statement.
Yeah, right. And that's when I went, okay, well, I'm gonna do it for 2025.
So send me the dates, and I'll just, I'll just.
I, that's what I was, that's, we're saying the same thing.
Can we put them on our calendar? I mean.
For our calendar, sure.
Yeah.
I mean, our calendar for this month isn't updated. Like, if we have a holiday, like.
We're, I'm gonna try and fix that for next year.
Okay, because we, with the changes we made to the two holidays, people were confused. Why are you meeting the first?
Right.
Well, that, it was documented and established, and, but yes, that's why. Okay, so if you send me those dates, I'll publish this. We're gonna, we're gonna target Water Whiz for January 27th.
I can try to go through that and figure out when we've got holidays and, you know, say, meeting canceled at that date, and then.
The months that we have, months that we have problems, February because of President's Day, and November because, oh, October and November because of.
Right.
Indigenous Peoples' Day and Veterans' Day.
And Thanksgiving, and then Christmas, and, yeah. So I'll just look at all the.
Every month has one holiday.
July 4th, sometimes, it's, yeah. Yeah, so we, that's good. So for the 25th, let's put, um, review of the 2025 planning board calendar on the agenda. And that will be something you can help me work on.
Yeah.
I'm about to, if you've already got the dates.
Yeah, no, I've got it all, and I just need to go through it and figure out if there are any holiday, um, I'm sure there are, holiday conflicts.
Um, one note, uh, we have been talking about site plan review special permit. Fearing Hill will come before us with a new, uh, application on, um, November 25th. The planning office has been working with the applicant. The applicant is, was, um, only applied for a site plan review. And the, um, the chair of the planning board said, no, you need both, and the planning office has been helping. So we've established that our expectation is that it is a site plan review special permit under the 2009, um, 2018 bylaws. Uh, fall town meeting, which is the one that's, and I understand why the applicant, the use table says you only need a site plan review. But if you read Article 15, it can, it, it, and we've got the historical precedent we've used. This is, will be a site plan review special permit, um, and we will present it as that way. It was advertised as a public hearing that way. The applicant may, um.
Falk.
Well, yeah, and, and that's his, his right. That's entirely his.
Carl, um, do we have Rich Bowen on that, which I would suggest that he?
Um, yes, so we're gonna.
Okay.
Um, where was I going?
No, that's.
Okay.
Just a comment.
Yes, um, hang on, 11:25 agenda. Oh, the other thing I wanted to say is I plan to use the same process that we use for Zero, no, 370 County Road with findings of fact. Unless the board, and we can, we can, we don't have to make that decision today. I have provided a draft letter to some citizens, I don't know if I copied the board, on how to submit evidence. Uh, I want to get that. I thought I sent, I sent it out. I didn't get, I don't get any comments. Josh, I want that also, then. We'll, we'll bring it up.
Send it out, Carl?
Uh, a, a while ago.
Okay, oh, yes.
It was a letter to the citizens, if you want to submit evidence.
Yep, yep.
Yes, you did. I thought there was something new.
You, you guys asked for examples. I said, and by the way, if you submit evidence in this form, a finding of fact will logically flow from documentary evidence.
Right.
So that, we're, we're kind of in agreement that for Zero Route 25, excuse me, for, uh, Fearing Hill, we're gonna use the findings of fact, uh, process. I haven't met with town council or the planning office to get feedback yet, or none of you have provided feedback on the process. But that's the plan. Think, think on that.
Was there an action item you wanted me to take from that?
Yeah, you and I probably should sit down and let's figure out what are the artifacts we want to have posted. We didn't really get all that into the rules and regs, did we? So we.
What do you mean?
The finding of fact process and the, the, we.
Doesn't mean we can't.
I don't know that that needs to be in the rule, I mean, it can be, but I don't know that it needs to be in the rules and regs to actually do it.
No, I don't think so.
Because, uh, and the way we can get around it is, if somebody doesn't follow that.
Yeah.
We, we don't tell them, sit down and shut up. We just.
Well, we invite them to, we, it's an invitation if they'd like. They don't have to.
They don't have to.
Correct.
And if they don't follow.
It's not a requirement.
Right.
Right.
The other thing for this project, I, we're going to read into the record the two, this is the third application, right? So we're gonna read into the record all the doc, and we're not going to re-edit that, or, um, re-enter all that. I did, I met with various citizens and said, I assure you, you don't have to resubmit any of that evidence. However, if you want to make sure that you, um, highlight a piece of evidence, my recommendation would be, rather than rereading all the evidence, you stand up and use the format that I said. Dear Planning Board, I would like you to deny this application, approve this application, condition this application. So I said, lead in, tell us what you want us to do. Start with, I want you to do this. Then say, based on the evidence I submitted on June 3rd, 2018, titled.
Yep.
I respectfully, and then close. You get, you, people say, I can't do this in two minutes. Yes, you can. If you reintroduce the evidence, all you need to do is get that piece of evidence back on the record. And tell us what you want to do. I believe this piece of evidence establishes that PFAS is detrimental, even if it flew by when they were making the, the, whatever, whatever the conclusion is, tell us what the, the conclusion is. How, and then say, this evidence supports that conclusion, therefore, I want you to do this. Tell us what you want us to do.
Your email was 10-8-2024.
Thanks.
If you want, because it's got, it's got a good outline in it that.
It does.
Yeah, I was trying to, how, how do you want to?
How, how to formulate it, just so that we get consistent material that.
And we know what you're asking us to do.
That can help us and help the town.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, there's, there's general nodding that we're gonna try that again for Fearing Hill. Fearing Hill's gonna be, uh, it.
It'll be Fearing Hill.
It's gonna be Fearing Hill.
Abs, absent a personnel change, that Josh is not like a one-armed paper hanger, you know, uh, yeah, we should continue within this vein. And, and I think not just the personnel issue, I think that, you know, it's, it's a good opportunity for the citizens of the town.
Right.
To have their say.
And, and I, as I said, I've met with some citizens. One was adamant that it was overburdening, and you can't require me to do this. Nobody's requiring me.
Nobody's requiring them to come and talk to us.
I did ask that citizen, are you getting the results you want? And that person said, well, maybe not. I said, well, maybe think about.
Here's a way that maybe you can get closer.
Yes. Uh, other citizens struggle with it, but it's hard. It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
But, um.
It's hard relative to other communities that have wherewithal, to have their own experts and lawyers, and it's, it's difficult here.
And, and we, that doesn't say, we still, we still don't get experts, and those, that testimony needs to get recorded as well, those.
For environmental justice communities.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. It's exactly the challenge, yep.
The goal is to, as we said, to be transparent, to engage with the citizens, but also to be transparent with the applicant, so that they understand. And, uh, hopefully, we can do better. And, and hopefully, we don't spend the next three years doing Fearing Hill, um, again. Because we won't have the same board again. It'll have, it'll just.
I'll be here.
Right.
I'll be here, Carl.
Huh?
I'll be here.
Yeah, I know. We're counting, we're counting on you. I, I, hopefully, I didn't say anything inappropriate. That was more policy and procedure. Um, I, I wasn't trying to be inappropriate there. Okay, uh, I need your, that piece of paper I gave you. Okay, so. I have to read into the record all the invoices I signed. And this was also the report on the 53G account, but I don't think it's what you were looking for. Plus, we got Ken's report, which, so.
The exact same report I got a year ago, just so you know.
All right, let me, let me read this in, and let's talk about what we're doing with the 50, because we're not making any progress, I think, that, that supports your, your desire.
I'm making some.
Okay, all right. So I, just, please know that, um, as chair of the planning board, uh, I have signed the following, um, invoices, most of which were for the ZBA. For some reason, somewhere along the line, the chair of the planning board was designated as responsible for signing. I am uncomfortable signing invoices for the ZBA, but we don't have to deal with that tonight.
Does the chair of the ZBA sign them for the planning board?
No.
Is it a cross-check thing?
No.
He does what he wants to do anyway.
He doesn't, he doesn't have to sign the bills. It's administrivia.
It's not a cross-check thing, which, would might.
I, I resent, well, no, excuse me. All right, I signed, uh, an invoice. All these are from Allen and Majors. $510 for Great Neck Road. Um, this is the, uh, this is actually a planning board for David Andrade. The balance of that account is $3,290. I signed an invoice. I don't see the date of the invoice here. It's not on the cover page. For, uh, Baypoint Club, also.
That thing still went on, Cal?
Uh, we have not gotten a status from, but the, but, to the best of my knowledge, the bond for Phase 2, $800,000 bond, has not been released. So the funds for that, but, uh, so I signed an invoice for $805.59. Uh, invoice number 42, 42862. Invoice number 43090 for, uh, 24 Oak Street. That was also when we asked them to go out and investigate, uh, for $180. Uh, invoice 43225 for $900 for Warren, uh, 59 Main Street, and, uh, I don't know if this was planning board or. Oh, uh, went to the planning board meeting, site walkthrough, and surety bond valuation. I signed an invoice 42864 for $2,197.78 for Peyton Estates. 42099 for $1,080 for 370 County Road. I signed an invoice 42892 for Indian Neck property for $1,800, and I think this was probably a ZBA project. I don't rec, I don't recognize this one as one of ours. Peer, oh, yeah, peer review for ZBA.
You're not gonna sign that?
I did. I, I, because that was the practice right now, to date. Um, we can just.
Just a random question. What if you did sign that?
I don't know. I, these were put in front of me saying, it's urgent, you gotta do these, I gotta get these in. I, I don't have any, so I want to go on the record, so I have no way, uh, other than to look at the planning board ones and say, that's reasonable. I have no way to validate that, that these are correct, accurate, other than they're all from Allen and Majors.
Okay. I just had a question about one. Why are we doing it?
I, because Sonia told me it was historical. I, I haven't pursued that yet. Um, we may take action to say we don't want to sign ZBA.
That's about.
Yeah, we have no way of knowing what we're doing.
Right.
Hey, Carl, I have one here. You want to sign this one for me?
I could sign it. Doesn't mean it's gonna get paid. Uh, Josh, can you speak to why the planning board chair signs all these invoices?
Um, I think it was the responsibility of the department head, and then when there was maybe some confusion about what his title was, our accounting department was accepting that, and then it fell back on the board to sign.
But why, why not both boards? Why, who signs your invoices? Concom, I should say. Not, not me.
Ken does. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, invoice 42891 for 2205, uh, I signed that, and. Uh, ZBA.
Okay, another comment, I'm sorry. I, I, historical fire. But we shouldn't be, so what if we just refuse, you say, you need a new policy for ZBA? It's not us.
Mike.
Hmm?
Mike.
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
What if we just say, we're not comfortable, we're not the ZBA, we don't have the responsibility, we've been told historical, that's fine. We don't want to be responsible, and just say, no.
Great. Can we hold that for, just let me get through reading these, and then maybe we could decide.
I said it only because ZBA came up.
Yes, yes, good. Uh, they're all, I think they're mostly, it's gonna be invoice 43227 for $360. This is Woodland Cove, and, um, ZBA. Invoice 42895 for $769.05, South Coast Development. And, um, this is, it's gonna also be ZBA, uh, peer review. 1823, doesn't say ZBA, South Coast Development. Oh, it says Popeyes. We didn't hear, it doesn't say ZBA, but it isn't, it isn't our project. Invoice, uh, 42894 for $630 for Town Tavern. Again, this is ZBA. We didn't hear Town Tavern. And the last one is invoice, um, 42893, Wareham Cranberry Highway LLC. It's a tropical smoothie cafe for $810.
Not us.
Not, not us. I can, I will attest that Sonia, uh, wrote the, the 53G balance for each account and certified that there were sufficient funds.
Okay.
To pay each of these invoices. Now, let's continue your. So Patty, just record that I got copies of those invoices and the release funds for each of those projects.
So the planning board okayed the chair to sign on our behalf, which I, was unanimous, and I agree wholeheartedly. But I do not believe the planning board should be approving projects that, under the ZBA headline, and. and we don't know what, anything about Popeyes, yet we signed off on Popeyes. I think it would be in our best interest to just say, make a motion, we do not sign any more invoices from the ZBA, and let the ZBA and whoever handle it. It's not our responsibility. And that would take you off the hook for signing something you know nothing about.
Right.
Is that a motion, Cal?
I have a motion.
Cal just made it. I second it.
I just made a motion.
Sam made it. The second by Mike Baptiste.
Yes.
Discussion, any discussion?
Mm-mm.
Pretty straightforward.
So the, all in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Chang Glieson, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Colbert, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So Josh, we need to work out a new procedure.
Sounds good.
I'll, let me know. Do I need to send a letter, or can you carry it back?
Ken's online, I'm here, I think we got the message.
We just had a vote.
Yeah.
It's done.
Well, no, but I mean, we need to work with them to implement that.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, Ken's online. He could have weighed in. Does he have any comment that we're not aware of, that, other than ease of process?
No, this process started when the, when I had retired initially, and nobody was in to take my place. The signature had, by the accounting office, had to go to the Planning Board. And I think what we can do is, is maybe revert, revert the decision, so that you don't have to sign any of the ZBA or, or the planning invoices, for that matter.
I don't mind signing the planning, I don't mind.
No, you should. You have the authority, and you should.
Yeah, all right.
All right, so just the ZBA, that should be fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Ken.
Okay, next item. Oh, let's talk about 53G accounts. We're getting more info. I, I don't understand why many of these accounts are not Planning Board accounts. Why is the Planning Board being asked to resolve these issues?
The information needs to come from the Planning Board, is what I've been told. What happened is...
We don't, these aren't all 53G accounts for our projects.
I agree. Some shouldn't be there.
There's ZBA projects, there's...
I agree. But if they're broken out and gotten back to the proper people, then they can take care of it. The problem is, nobody's doing it. I asked for accounting of it, I got it. I asked for accounting, it was the same exact one, nothing's been done. We've been told many times, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're not. I printed the first three pages that Ken sent me, and I thought that was it. Well, they continued, for, almost 400 pages. It stopped when my printer ran out of paper. There's a heading for every single account that we have, and it follows with monthly balances, interest on these accounts, going back eight, nine, 10 years.
And this is an enormous amount of work for Sonia, every month.
I'm not saying...
No, I'm saying, this is bizarre.
And I agree. And some of these people are dead.
Someone in the town is respons, this is a staff job, to administer, track. This is not a volunteer board's job, to keep track of stuff.
Some of, I agree, 100%.
Or has it become so critical that it needs to be outsourced, at this point?
Those are decisions the town administration needs to make.
Right.
I reject that we're responsible for fixing this problem.
We are responsible for fixing the majority of it.
No, I don't even accept that. Because once we approve a project...
The 53G account should be dissolved.
Yeah, isn't it an accounting issue at that point?
That's an accounting issue. It's not, the Planning Board is not, doesn't have the wherewithal, nor the authority, to address this issue.
You're the ones that initiate the, the accounts by ordering them for the projects that you want reviewed. And in the case when you complete the review, I think it is appropriate that you also sign off on it and vote on remittance of the, of the 53G account.
Okay, I don't have, I don't have a problem with what you said, but that is an operational activity to track and administer.
And what do we do about the ones that are so aged, that we, this board, this current board?
Except Mike.
Knows, knows nothing about, and...
Nor, nor do we have the records that would tell us where the, where the current ownership stands relative to these accounts. We would have no way of knowing.
Well, then, in that case, I think that if I get a vote from the board that says that you want the staff to administer these, these funds, then we'll do that. But what I put that together was so that I could get a vote from the board to say that you wanted to take action on them.
Well, it seems that moving forward, there should be a policy in place that as soon as a project has been voted on and is closed...
The problem is, they don't always close right away. Because you have inspection reports during the construction phase...
Well, we should...
Whenever the end is.
We got to figure out a process by which we don't drop the ball on them.
And I asked if it was legal to set a limit where we just send, just write the 60 cents off, or the 6 cents. There's eight that people owe us money, and I think six of them are $9.05.
So...
It's more the meal of the life.
The stamp, the envelope, the paper, and the time to even address it. If we can find out from council, can we have a policy that if it's under a dollar, or $10, or whatever, that would eliminate that entire section, except two, and one of them, which is a quarter million dollars, by the way?
And whose project is that?
Well...
Is that a ZBA project?
Planning Board.
Which project?
Uh...
A quarter million dollars? Nobody's worried about a quarter million dollars?
That's what I said when I saw it.
The, the problem with that account is that it never started with a fund. So you guys have issued releases of that 53G, those funds, but it never started with a balance, from what I can see in this spreadsheet.
Well, how did we then...
And I don't think there's at least $250,000 worth of funds that we had, or that...
It's a performance bond.
That we just gave away. Right, it, sorry, Ken said it was a performance...
Oh, so it was a bond.
Yeah, so we've got 53G accounts mixed in with bonds, and they are different...
That's correct.
They are different things.
Very much so.
Right, the bonds have, will expire.
But they can't expire.
A bond does expire.
They should be renewed, and if they, this is the problem we ran into Baypoint. The bonds expired with nobody...
Somebody, somebody dropped the ball on that one, Cal.
Well, I understand, but...
Bonds, bonds I renew, they expire. Way back in history, we had a problem. Those bonds, they were gone, nobody knew where they were. So we put in the rules and regulations that the town was third party on the bond, so we got notified, and they dropped the ball again.
He's correct. If we put our name on it, instead of the applicant's name, so the money was in control of us.
Our name is not, the town of Wareham is on it.
Right, I agree.
The Planning Board is not on it.
I agree.
The Planning Board does not have full-time staff to track and record, and we turn over, volunteers turn over...
I agree, Cal. I'm talking about just trying to clean it up. And I'm not saying we're responsible...
And I reject that it's our job to clean it up. All of them.
I agree with you. There's, a lot of these are not our responsibility. The bonds aren't ZBA, there's a lot of stuff on here...
Well, let's separate bonds from 53G accounts, because they're, I think they're two different issues.
I agree.
I don't think we should write off bonds. Somebody needs to investigate what the project, so like Baypoint, we don't want to write the bond off for Baypoint. There's work that's not been done.
Right. But a lot of these have been done, a long time ago. And i, if the project is done, the bond is there, it's probably expired, they wouldn't renew it.
Who's going to do all that research, Sam? I'm not going to do it.
I agree 100%. I think if we just...
Didn't Ken just, what Ken, Ken? It appears that Ken is saying that he's willing, some, find someone to do it, correct?
Well, Ken, Ken...
That's correct.
Yes. Ken gave you a recommendation on how he thinks you should move on a lot of these accounts.
Right.
Where, I didn't see that, I didn't see that on each line item.
Yeah, Ken had sent out an Excel spreadsheet with recommendation on how to move on, you know, what, what account.
I missed the recommendation.
This is what he gave me. Yeah, so you'll notice under the notes section, he makes a note to release a performance bond, or he makes a note to release...
I missed that. I didn't see that. I just looked at the overwhelming list.
So if you brought those before us, we could kill them. That's a recommendation, he's, he said they're okay to do, and there's also this, just blank, there's also question marks. And there are recommendations there, but if, start counting them up...
And I will report that Sonia said, "Those are wrong." Okay.
The balance.
The balance.
Right, right.
Does that change it?
I, I think the, the board would make a vote to release any and all remaining funds.
I am not going to vote, because I don't want to release any funds for Baypoint, for example. Or David Andrade, or...
No.
Peyton Estates, or...
Right, I think you would identify five or 10 that you're ready to move on, and then you would take a vote to release the remaining funds of those, not of entirely everything, but...
There's recommendations that we release this going back 22 years, and Ken has recommended releasing it. And if they can bring it before us, an agenda item, we could take care of a lot of these. There are recommendations, that have been certified by her, that Ken said, "Okay, these are okay, so let's do it."
Again, if it's not a Planning Board project, why is the Planning Board going to make that recommendation?
I'm going by what Ken said. He said these, the ones that he said, "Okay," are okay by him, not by anybody else. So that was his recommendation. I took this project on to try to clean this mess up. It's a mess. And I agree with you that not all of them are ours, some of them are bonds, and if we break it out, get rid of the ones that Ken's recommended we approve, break out the bonds, take ZBA out, and zero. Why is it even here?
But then we have to vote on each one individually.
No.
Yes.
Why?
We could do a consent agenda kind of thing.
We could, we could have the list, make it part of the record.
The Planning Board has voted to release this, this fund, on this date, everything's done. There's a bunch of them, and he's right. We can just, I initially said, I'm going to just clean it up.
Submit it to the record.
Yes.
Well, we could put the list to the record, but we could also let the Planning Board...
But you said you were going to clean it up. You didn't get our agreement that we were going to clean it up.
I said I would try to clean it up, and I have. I've met with different people.
I appreciate that.
And I think we're talking about what Ken has already reviewed, and has said you may release it. So that would be a start, and then we can go from there.
Yes. He recommends a whole bunch of these, they come before us and release. And it's not being done, and I'm just trying to clean it up one by one. And then we can say, "Okay, these bonds, they're not ours." And it's just...
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm following you, and I'm not, I'm being difficult, I exert. Who's going to do that analysis, is that these are not ours?
I can try.
Do they have the numbers?
I can do that as well.
Well...
I don't want my name releasing something that I don't know what it is.
I'm going by Ken's recommendation of the ones that he says that is okay, that's...
Which means that Ken's reviewed them.
That's...
That's what I would start with.
Yes, that's what he just said. And he's made recommendations, he said they're okay to release. And I said, "Why don't we release them? We can do it next meeting, or the one after, whatever." That would be just taking the ones out, says Ken is okay, Ken's okay, Ken's okay, Ken's okay.
Because Ken, have you, I miss, I'm saying this based on, my assumption is that you reviewed each one, determined what project it related to, and all of that. Can I assume that's the case?
That's correct. And I did research in the file, files on these ones as well, too, to see where, what the stash was.
Okay.
What would you like me to do?
It's not what I want you to do.
Okay.
I get the one vote, that's all I, I get one vote.
I hope that's nobody with their opinion. That's probably what it is.
Do you, wait, let me, you asked Mike, how would we take what's in front of you and do that? Because it's not, it would have to be sorted some way to say, "This tranche identified as this, this tranche identified as that."
Every one of these has an account. We would release it with the name, the amount, and Ken's recommendation that we do that.
No, but, but I was going to take Jane's approach, which says, "We, we don't read each one out, we, we identify batches, tranches."
That's right. By consent.
By consent.
Right. But it's going to be based on a list with Ken's notation and the project.
But that's not, that's not sorted in some kind of order.
No, no, no.
I agree. It's not taking this...
It would have to be sorted.
It's, yeah, we'll, we'll have a list of, these are those that are recommended, this is the, this is the...
This is a bond.
This is the project, all of that. That's...
And we could do the same thing we do with...
I don't feel comfortable with anything less than that, frankly. I want to know which one they relate to.
But I also think that we could do just what we do at town meeting, and if, I mean, give us all the chance, a chance to review the list.
Correct.
We never get the list at town meeting.
Well, we know, we get the warrant, and they...
But there's no detail in that warrant. I vote no every time.
But this isn't a warrant.
So just you and Brandon.
But the, in concept, the way town meeting works, that there's a list that we get to review beforehand, and if there are any items on it that you don't want in the consent agenda, we'll pull those.
Right.
And then you can vote on what's left, and we can try and...
And the ones that say bond, we can pull out and say, "We're not doing anything with them."
Right.
That's a separate list.
We need further investigation to see whether the bond is still valid.
Okay. I mean...
So when, when do we want to put this on the agenda?
Okay, let me, on the computer, can we just X and say, "These are going to be broken out"?
Can we sort them that way?
You could sort them that way. Is it in Excel?
It's in Excel. We can hide, we can hide the ones that you don't want to see, and we can make visible the ones that you do.
Basically, start with the ones that Ken has said you may release.
Just start the ones that are approved. Just identify them, and we can bring it to the agenda, and that will be a first step of cleaning up what has already been approved by...
We have a Ken project.
Yeah, and the, I don't have it, I can't get it, the actual account we get every month for every single one of these, and that's one of these. It becomes one of these in our department. We actually get a statement from the bank for every one of these.
What is your department?
Planning Board, I'm sorry.
I didn't, I wasn't following, I'm sorry.
We get a bank statement for every account, every month.
We do?
Yeah, we do.
Oh.
I saw them all today, John Foster's office.
The Planning Board never sees that. I've never seen one.
Planning Office does.
Yes.
Okay.
And they, they take that information and put it in this form. That was the 400 pages. And, you know, each one of these, each one of these accounts has a name and a date going back to, like I said, this one goes back only four years, there's some that go back 10. But the ones that Ken approved, we can take care of that, I'm assuming, if everybody's fine with that.
We can go to the next group and see.
Exactly. And I, I just said I would try, because when I saw it, I was like, "Holy crap."
Got an intern we can assign this to?
I mean, there are three pages here, you know, single...
Look up each one of them.
We can clean it up to the point where maybe it's manageable, and it gets down to a point that maybe we can go further, but we can take care of the easy ones. I'm repeating myself now.
Yep.
And I'm holding up that important, that, that important motion.
Do the drops first.
No, no, we're not done. I've got some other things we have to do. All right, so somebody is going to present a list for us to act on.
Correct.
Organized in a way that we can act on it in a consent.
Yep.
And you're that person?
I'm going to work with Josh and John.
Okay. And then when you let me know, we'll put it on the agenda.
Yep.
And I, I will accept this approach. I'm not comfortable with it in any stretch.
I'm doing the best I can with the information I have, and nobody else is doing it for a long, long time. Okay?
I, I accept that.
Okay.
I appreciate your effort.
And they did say, you, you gave your best shot at it, they had nothing but good things to say about you.
Ken and I worked on that list, and, you know, you'll notice on the list, Carl, it sounds like you may not have seen it, but if you look at the list, there are even accounts that we've identified that, you know, there's remainder in the fifty-three G, the project may not have required an ASBilt at the time of conditioning, but sending Phil out to do an site investigation now to give his opinion on what was approved versus what's there, and just so maybe we can work on cleaning up some of those as well, saying, "There's no ASBilt expected, but this is the review that we got." Phil says it's ninety-five percent of what it should have been.
Are they assigning subdivisions?
I don't know.
Because that's the other thing, what kind of project is.
Sure.
Because subdivisions require ASBilts.
I, I think we were identifying some of these accounts that are ten, twelve years old.
Even, well, as you know, we have ten-year-old subdivisions that are gonna come back to us. We shouldn't release that fifty-three G account.
I agree.
No.
So that's not on the list.
All right.
So you're saying, Josh, that there, it does look like there's some forensic analysis going on. Yeah.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. Makes me feel a little bit...
I didn't bring this, I did not bring this up to have you do it.
It's a challenge, but it's...
I'm done.
It's exposure for the town, we need to get to it.
The town administrator needs to take some ownership on this.
If I saw an account that had a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar balance, right or wrong, I'd wanna know if it was there or not, and...
All right. So we have a plan. We're going to come up with tranches of accounts and funds to be released, based on a recommendation from the planning office.
Correct.
In writing. Because I don't want anybody coming back to me saying, when they go to court, you're... Because the people getting named in these cases aren't the planning office, it's the five people sitting here.
Yep. I agree.
I, I, okay. If the board is okay with this approach, regardless of my, my reservations?
Well, we're, we're not voting on it tonight.
We are not, so let's see...
And I think we get a chance to see what the list looks like.
We're supporting the approach.
Exactly.
But, yeah, I think the, the approach I do agree with, but I think we, we get another chance to look at the list that's put together of what we're talking about. I, I think from, from the material that you've got right now, to what we wanna look at, there's some sorting that has to happen, so that we can analyze it a little bit more readily. So let that happen, and then we can...
And it may not be our responsibility.
And... We may change our, our thinking about what the approach is once we see the resorted list.
And I appreciate your volunteering for the town. I don't, I don't see the ZBA worried about this stuff. I don't see this recommendation going to the ZBA.
No, just, these are your accounts. They're not on our list.
Yeah, they are, that's only the only...
Well, I know that, but they should be additionally subdivided. If it's ZBA, we shouldn't be worried about it. Shouldn't be on this list, this is an all-encompassing list.
Well, maybe that's a separate...
Yeah.
Sort, a separate pile of sorting. The, the ZBA projects are...
Yeah, I think it should only be a list with planning board. I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable with ZBA.
That's part of it, is just cleaning it up.
Yeah.
Right.
Making different categories.
Yep, right.
Okay, I, I will support you in that. I, I'm not trying to make work for you.
I'm not either.
Reducing your angst, though. Because it's, yeah, challenging.